I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Chair Kurth.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Marsh. Commissioner Wells. Commissioner Harriman.
Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led to us by Commissioner Huber and Commissioner Wells.
Heavenly Father, help us to remember that we are here to serve and not to be served. Find us daily of the many who need to be helped. Guide us to be there for others and assist them in...
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America.
Public for which he stands. By indivisible, with...
Okay, at this time, we need to call for nominations for the chairperson and the vice-chair. Is there any nomination for chair?
Yes, I nominate Rob Kurth to be chair.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber with a second by Commissioner Marsh to name Rob Kurth as chair for the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We need a motion for vice-chair.
Chairman Kurth, I nominate Paul Marsh to be vice-chair.
I second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber with a second by Commissioner Wells to nominate Commissioner Paul Marsh for vice-chair for the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Paul.
Congratulations, Vice-Chair. And thank you all for having faith in me to... Chair, one more...
Don't go that far.
One more term. Okay, with that, we have set a meeting minutes from the last meeting we need to approve.
I can make a motion to approve the Planning Commission minutes from February 13th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wells with a second by Vice-Chair Marsh to approve for the minutes for February 13th, 2019, regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Any opposed? Motion carries with Commissioner Huber abstaining.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number one, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Agenda item number one is planning case number PLAN18-00042. This is a site plan and conditional use permit that will allow for a multi-tenant commercial center development consisting of a fueling station with an accessory convenience store and car wash, including alcohol, beer and wine sales, I'm sorry, as well as five separate restaurant retail pads in the remainder of the development. This proposal is located on two corners of Mariposa and Nisqually roads, on the southeast corner and the southwest corner of Nisqually-Mariposa roads. This proposal is located on a five-and-a-half acre site that will be developed approximately in two phases. Phase one of the development will consist of the fueling station with the convenience store and car wash on the southwest corner of the site. This proposal will... or this portion of the proposal will include the street improvements, landscaping, onsite circulation, connections throughout lots four and five, so the entire west side of development, with the exception of the buildings themselves, will be developed in conjunction with phase one. Phase two will consist of the southeast corner of the site with the remainder of the restaurant and retail pads. When this builds out, it will also include the applicable site improvements, landscaping, street improvements. Environmental assessment for this project was conducted via an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. This resulted in measures for air and water quality, geology and soils, biological measures and cultural and tribal resource measures, as noted in the conditions of approval. There's also comments received from two agencies which have been added to the conditions of approval to adequately address any concerns of those. The conditional use permit, as noted, will be for the fueling station portion of the facility as well as alcohol sales, which consists of beer and wine at this location. Fueling station consists of six fueling islands, the accessory... Sorry, the fueling canopy of approximately 4,000 square feet and the car wash at the rear of the site, which is going to be screened primarily from public view. As noted, the remainder of the site plan consists of four restaurant pads and a retail tenant. Site access to this location will be served via Mariposa Road with a signalized intersection at the southernmost driveways, as noted in the traffic impact analysis. Additionally, site access will be via shared access to the east and southwest of the site in order to promote orderly development in the future and prevent unnecessary driveways onto Mariposa Road and Nisqually Road. Also, in lieu of design guidelines for the entire center, in this case, the applicant has chose to utilize the fueling station in the architectural character image on page 63 and 67 of the agenda as the guidelines. As conditioned, when the additional pads come in for development, they will be reviewed administratively via minor site plan and staff will utilize the existing development and the architectural character images to ensure that development is coordinated with similar designs and building aesthetics. That being said, there was also one or two conditions on the parcel map and the site plan that the applicant had raised some concerns over, which had been addressed accordingly with the removal of one sentence of those, as noted in the addendum item number one. Overall, the project meets all requirements of Title 16, such as parking, landscaping, architectural design, and parcel design for the tentative parcel map, which will divide this single parcel into six separate parcels. With that, staff recommends approval of the project as conditioned, in addition to the updated site plan condition number 70 and tentative parcel map condition number 32.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission for staff at this point? I had one, just one quick question before we open the public hearing. I noticed that there was the letter from La Houghton in there that they had, it seemed that they had some concerns with some flooding issues on Balsam. I was just curious if any of that is being required to be mitigated in our current conditions or in this project.
Well, that's an existing condition on Balsam Road that is a pre-existing condition. So this development, since it's mitigating stormwater flows, it's not increasing any flows off-site, so it would not be exacerbating an existing problem. But the city had, that is one of the problem areas where sometimes it will flood and we'll have to remove silt on Balsam Road to the south of this development, but it's really not related to this development.
Yeah, that's kind of why I asked, because it didn't seem related, but I know it's an issue.
So that the way the development was conditioned, it is mitigating all of their flows, we're not increasing any off-site flows.
Okay, thank you. All right, then I'll open up the public hearing. Is the applicant, if you have any comments, questions?
Sean McGlaughlin, just here to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Any questions? I don't see any, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to us on item number one? Seeing no one, I will then close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Chairman Kurth, I adopt the attached mitigation negative declaration with the mitigation monitoring and report program for the subject's site plan conditional use permits and tentative partial map. Adopt resolution number P-1908 approving the fueling station condition use permit portion of case number PLAN 1842, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Adopt resolution number P-19009 approving the site plan portion of case number PLAN 1842, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Adopt resolution number P-1910 approving the alcohol sale condition use permit portion of case number PLAN 1842 with a finding of public convenience necessity, subject to attached conditions of approval. And adopt resolution number P-19011 approving the tentative parcel map portion of case number PLAN 1842, subject to the attached conditions of approval. And the site plan condition 70 and the parcel map condition 32 amended the condition.
I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber with a second by Commissioner Wells to approve case PLAN18-00042 as condition, including the modification. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, that's been approved. Congratulations. That's a good...
Good project, the city of Victorville.
It's a good-looking project and a really, a really great area with lots of new growth, so, thank you.
I should say thank you to the staff for their great job on this.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number two. It looks as if there's a request for a continuance on this one. Is there any further information we need from staff at this point?
Not today, but we're hoping to bring a full report before you to take action on, on May 8th.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll open up the public hearing on agenda item two. Is there anyone here to speak to us on number two? Okay, seeing no one, I will leave the public hearing open and continue this item to the May 8th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Kurth with a second by Commissioner Huber to keep the public hearing open and continue case PLAN19-00001 to the May 8th, 2019 Regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number three, staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Kurth and fellow commissioners. Item number three is a request from Keighley Homes to change a undeveloped street that's currently named Chicory Court to Mill Pond Court. They're currently developing in the track and have requested this to accommodate or to appease potential residents. The request is being made and staff has no objections. Our recommendation is to adopt the attached resolution which would affirm the street name change and allow us to route to the noted appropriate authorities.
Thank you. Do I need to open the public hearing on this one? Or comments? I will, I'll open... I'll open the public hearing if anyone has comments or questions on item number three. Okay, if you know what, I'll close that, bring it back to discussion with the, with the commission for discussion and/or determination. Are we okay with Chicory?
I move the adopt resolution number P-1912 approving the street name change within the tract 14741 from Chicory Court to Mill Pond Court.
I second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber with a second by Commissioner Wells to adopt resolution P-19-012 approving the street name change. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And I meant to say, are we okay with Mill Pond, not Chicory? Chicory's the one we're changing it, sorry. Item number four, please.
Thank you, Chairman Kurth. Item number four is a discussion item on potential Title 16 municipal code amendments regarding recreational vehicle parking, landscape weed barrier requirements, massage accessory to salon, and standards for securing vacant abandoned commercial buildings. Staff is moving forward in the coming months to bring another round of code amendments for consideration to the Planning Commission, and we felt it prudent to bring before you some discussion items that will help us better craft any potential code amendments related to these items in the future. And Chairman, if you want to stop me as I go through each one of these, or if you want me to just go through all four of these and then get feedback... Chairman, if you want to stop me as I go through each one of these, or if you want me to just go through all four of these and then get feedback. Um, do that, but I'll, I'll go ahead and stop after the um, RV parking uh, presentation and uh, get some feedback. Maybe the motion could be all at one at the end, but.
Yeah, I think that'd be best if, if we kind of took a break at each one and see if any commissioners have questions or further discussion and give some guidance at that point.
Great, so uh, with that, uh, I'll dive into our recreational vehicle parking discussion, so. Approximately ten years ago, our, our code was modified to prohibit uh, parking within the front and street side yard area. Um, then it was modified shortly after that, um, based on complaints that were received. Um, there was a loud complaint that had a third car garage. So I think at the time, the Planning Commission wanted to find a way to accommodate for um, some scenario where we would allow. RV parking within the front yard area. So the current code that we have only allows RV parking within the front of a uh, third car garage. It's not allowed to block the required parking, which is your two-car garage. Uh, so what Karen passed out for you are graphics showing um, in red. Where our current code allows you to park. Um, as you can see in front of the front plane of the house. You're only allowed to park if you have a third car garage. Otherwise, it needs to be hu, be behind the front wall plane of the house. So that's where you see on the side yard, yard there, that other red um, asterisked um, place where a RV could park. Uh, if the Planning Commission is um, well, let me, let me give some history on how, how, how this has kind of made it difficult for our code enforcement to. Um, explain and ju, justify when they're enforcing this code. Uh, we've gotten a lot of uh, questions and concerns from residents. And our code officials here today to test a little bit more about this, but um. When we do get um, complaints and we do go out there to try to enforce it. We do, we are kind of uh, get a dumbfounded response from a resident's understa. Kind of bewildered on why it's so restrictive and limited to just only in front of the third car garage if a resident has that. So um, trying to take those, those um, responses into consideration, we wanted to bring it back before you to see kind of. What the Planning Commission thought on our current standard. Um, you know, the Planning Commission may think that the current standard is too lenient. Um, or they uh, may think that uh, it, it should be loosened uh, to accommodate ad- additional parking if, if uh. If a resident so choose to park a vehicle. Now, if the Planning Commission decided uh, to expand the options of parking within the street or side yard. Uh, staff is illustrated in yellow, uh, where staff would recommend that we expand that. Um, and you could see here in the graphic that that would be in a, in a side, in a side yard that would lead to the backyard on a paved um, surface. Um, or on like a street side yard that would be behind a fence. And um. Staff would obviously, if the Planning Commission um, consensus was to move forward with this, we would draft language and. And bring something before you in the, in the coming months for review. And so that's um, in a nutshell, what the, the first proposal is, is noted, staff didn't feel based on. Prior Planning Commission discussion that we would want to start allowing the RV parking in, in front of the house. Where it would block like the livable space or windows or people couldn't look out. Um, or block, block the required parking, so um, this is just uh. Brought before you uh, by staff to get your input. Um, and we'd like to hear your, your feedback.
I have a question. Okay, on the red markings of what is currently permitted. It shows the parking in front of a three-car garage to the right of the larger garage door. Does this mean that that is the only position? That it would, it was allowed to park? It cannot park more to the right, but i- in front of the?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. Actually, um, the way our code uh, currently is established. As long as they have access to two, two uh, to a two-car garage. They could uh, place the RV in the middle or all the way to the left, so it could, the RV could be parked in front of um, either one of the three. Our slots.
Okay, and then my next question is, in the, in the yellow, RV parking um, location for, that is being considered. That is on the street side of this particular home. Uh, did I hear you say it needed to be behind a fence?
That's how staff would address it, and we would also come back with you with how that RV is um, accesses that location. Uh, because what we don't want is where they act, they, they park the RV by using the um, handicap access ramp at the corner. Uh, we've seen that in, in past scenarios where they've um, they have room to park it, but they, they use that ramp instead of uh. Getting approved curb cut in another location along their side yard to, to store.
Okay, so then there would be a driveway on that street side in, in, on a corner house to access into. RV parking on the side of a house.
It would need to be from an approved driveway location. And um, the engineering department would need to issue an encroachment permit for that.
I have some questions. First of all, I think uh, the city has far too many uh, RVs in these homes. And they're obstructing uh, people's vision. Out on the sidewalk. And um, when they're put behind the fence, a lot of times the height of them. Uh, in my opinion, obstructs the setback of the house. Uh, we have rules for the setback. Times seven feet, sometimes ten feet, but if you're going to put a ten-foot high, twelve-foot high uh, RV right there. The neighboring house can't see nothing. And um, it's uh, virtually on the fence line. So uh. Not too cool with that.
And was that, was that comment pertaining to any, any RV parking in the front part of the house, whether it be the driveway, the side paved side yard?
Any, any. I, I know it's difficult because so many people have RVs. But I just don't think they should be buying homes with twenty-five foot long driveways. And expecting to put their RV and motor home in the front yard. And then uh, uh, like Scott said. They're uh, using the handy, the corner ramp to get into the backyard. It just, it's, it's getting, it's just getting kind of. People want to uh, own a motor home and uh, park it at their house. I, I just think that they make a bad decision to buy a house in a housing tract. Or a, or a planned unit development that doesn't, isn't designed or built out to accommodate that.
I actually agree with those comments. Um. You know, driving through the neighborhoods, it's always been a bit of an issue to, to look down the streets and see. What in some cases could be, you know, a little more uniform, you know, and clean. The front, front garage areas and front driveways, and they all have plenty of cars parked, but when, when you have a tall, you know, ten-foot high. Motor home that's twenty-some feet long and it's just parked in the driveway, sometimes sticking out, and unfortunately, a lot of times. From what I've seen, they're, they're in disrepair and they don't look very good. And they're just kind of parked there. And it really does take away the, any visual aesthetics, you know, on that street. Um, I also agree if, if somebody's going to be buying a, or owning a, a larger motor home like that. Just like the insurance costs and the maintenance costs, there's storage costs usually, if you're going to live on a little typical seventy-two hundred square foot lot in Victorville. Just as Victorville does not, has, has problems and has um. Lots of um, ordinances having to do with secondary structures on the property and even storage sheds. In this case, this is almost like another structure on the property is plopped right, right out smack in the front of the driveway. For the whole world to enjoy. I don't really have any answers, but uh, since this has come up, um, that's, that's my feeling.
Able to comment again?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think there are some uh, circumstances that should be exempt of that, and that is, you know, if you have a half acre lot. And. Setback that can um, accommodate a motor home, then that's fine. I don't think it should go citywide. But in these planned unit developments, it, it's, it just to me. Doesn't work. I certainly wouldn't want to have my neighbor with a big gigantic motor home parked right next to, uh, up against my wall. Uh, and like you said, it's almost the same as having another structure. And we all know the setback, I believe, I'm not exactly uh, exact on it. But as long as you're over the fence line, uh, I believe, isn't there a setback for that?
For uh, for permanent structures?
Yes, yeah.
Setback requirement, once you go over, for accessory structures, once they're over seven feet in height. Uh, they need to observe a um, five-foot setback minimum.
So if somebody's got a shed. But it, to have a motor home there doing the exact same thing, I, I just, I just don't.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, when, I've looked at new homes and they say there's RV parking. Oh, if there were changes made, when you go to look at the new structures of homes and when you're buying brand-new homes. And like in the case of this particular home, this looks like it could have been advertised as RV parking available. And so is there some type of rule that says the, if it's, if it was, the house was constructed. With RV parking encouraged, that they would need to park behind that gate? And it maybe eliminate the um, view from the street?
I, I don't know particularly, but what I want to, what I'd venture to say is when, when a home builder advertises RV access or RV parking. They're referring to a wider side yard that allows for the RV to uh, drive into the rear yard area behind the front wall plane. Um, so they're not necessarily talking about in the front yard area. Um, but um, we have through the design guidelines. There, they encourage when a developer has enough area to provide RV parking on, on the side where the driveway is located. So you, um, it is a benefit, it is a selling point that we've heard from developers, um, but what they're referring to is behind the front wall plane.
Exactly, that's what I mean.
And I wouldn't be fully opposed to that, because I know in some cir, circumstances in Victorville, there are larger lots. There are even some tract homes that have wider lots, that it would be, it'd be more appropriate to park beyond the front plane of the front of the house, on the side yard. You know, maybe gated and paved, and that would be more appropriate. But in these cases, kind of like we're looking at, at here where it's real tight, you know, that would be tough. And also. I know people have to bring the, the motor homes and the large trailers to their house to load them, to clean them. Um, to do maybe some minor maintenance. I, I'm okay with that too, just as long as it's not permanently parked there, you know, falling apart.
Chair Kurth. Um, may I ask, just so that the ca, uh, commission has a full picture? Would it be possible to hear from the code official just to understand what the public's main issue is? Because. When I look at the picture that's um, before us, and I look at the depiction of what's currently allowed. It obviously would allow for only a certain length of a, an RV because it can't protrude. I'm assuming the code indicates it can't protrude into the sidewalk.
Yeah, right now it says it can't um, can't protrude into the sidewalk. Um, but if it's parked on the side yard, it needs to be behind the front wall plane.
So is it possible addressing Commissioner Herrmann's concerns, is it possible that even if it were a, if it were the right length? That that RV could be permanently stored, for lack of a better term? Um, in front of that third garage and it still has the, kind of the blighting effect under current code? Is that a potential scenario under the current code?
Well, yes, so it, the, the result of parking in your third, in front of your third car garage uh, does bring up some of the issues that. People have stated in the past where it um, limits views to the street. Um, your neighbor may not have the appropriate visibility when they're backing out of their driveway or, or for, for matter, the homeowner itself. Uh, may have obstructed uh, view, um, not seeing what maybe be sidewalk. Um, so. There is potential there. Um. Like maybe, I, I don't know if that blights the right word for it, but it uh, it, 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 we, we have. Well, it, it's, it's um, it, it's up to the community what, what they feel what blight is. Um, I'm just kind of stating what, what our current code is and kind of the evolution of how we got to this point. There was a point where the commission, the city council put a code into effect that eliminated all parking in the front yard. And then it was retracted slightly for this limited. Planning commission's looking to um, make it simple on code enforcement and, and uh, other staff to uh, explain the code. Commission does not want parking at all in the front, we could, we could bring that back as a code, code revision. Wanted to get your um, your insight on this and, and so we draft the appropriate language when it comes back.
I have kind of, I have a comment. That, um, I'm for the uh, the um, the old um. Statute where there's really no parking in the front. I think that that's more uniform. It makes, it makes the uh, the zoning departments um. Ask a lot easier because it's just a uniform. At that point, it's a uniformed um, um, code that you cannot park your RV in the front.
So, Chair, if I might, the, the, so that staff has clear direction, um, and if you want to hear from the code official, we can. But I think that where I was going is that based on the comments of Commissioner Herrmann and the concurrence of Chair Kurth. It sounds like even under the current code, you may have some issues, so it might be a different revision that you're looking for. So I was trying to get the complete. Picture so that the commission could get revisions in either direction, more strict, more lenient, and I just don't know if the staff report. Tells enough about what the public is complaining about.
Yeah, yes, and that, that is a really good point, and at that point, I would like to uh, welcome Mr. Duran. Um, if you could give some of your thoughts and then the commission, we can um, uh, continue some discussion and hopefully give some more guidance to, to staff.
Thank you Chairman. Good evening. Um, to give you a, a, I guess a bit of a spectrum of the complaints that we're getting, we're getting in from both sides. We're, we're getting complaints of the aesthetics from those that are impacted by large RVs obstructing views. As the commissioner indicated. Um, we're also getting complaints from those that have the ability to pave an area without obstructing uh, a view. Um, and perhaps are not very large RVs, and perhaps are just very small utility trailers. Um, and so uh, often someone, sometimes what we're seeing, I think in one of the pictures, if the pictures were provided to the, to the commission, um. I don't know if they were Scott or not, but something like this, if this is available to you. Probably not. Well, there's an example here where a uh, a uh, property has a three-car garage with ample uh, side, a side yard to pave. Uh, not taking up fifty percent of the landscaping in the front with a small utility trailer. Um, and so the code's restricted to that, and often the homeowner will engage us, it's a saying. Um, that they um, are trying to make it aesthetically pleasing. Uh, and often as I stated, the code kind of prevents us from allowing them to work with that. Um, there are other examples, um, provided where the houses, uh, the property's much too small, the RV is uh, much too large. Uh, sometimes obviously the RV is not maintained, it's, it's, it's unwashed, it's unpleasing. And so equally, we get those complaints as well from the public of the, of the nuisance that it creates.
Yes.
So um, I know our code enforcement force. Probably not adequate to, to take care of all of it. But um, uh, what, what, are you guys just going out and citing people when you get a complaint or if you're out and around? Uh, are you citing people and when they're cited, is it just a notice for the initially?
Right, um, we generally are responding to these complaints on a reactive basis. Um, uh, primarily dealing with a limited staff that we have. Um, and generally what we do if we find that there is uh compliance that needs to be met, we'll give the homeowner thirty days to remedy that. Um, uh, often it's uh finding a storage uh for that RV. Um, if we see that perhaps it's an RV that needs to repair and there are ongoing repairs and we can see and we can vet that the repairs are ongoing, we'll give an extension beyond the thirty days. So our goal is to work with the uh public so long as they're progressing with compliance.
More questions?
Comment.
Yes.
We live in the high desert, there's more RVs and boats than probably any place in the country. That's why a lot of people live here. I, I hear people want to put a lot of restrictions on here. I don't think we should. I think there's, there is some inconvenience, I, I agree with you. But so many people live in the desert and. As of RVs and boats, I, I think that we can overblow this also. Forty-five foot motor home which they make now wouldn't fit in. This picture here because it's too, it's too big, but uh. I think there should be some maybe a side yard setback that could be parked in the yellow here, which would be very. Light uh from the view of the homeowner to the right of this picture here and this picture here. Try to please your neighbors. I have a motor home, but I live in a two and a half acre lot. So I park it, you know, two hundred feet away from the street. But I'm concerned about the neighbors. I don't want them to look at an ice. Park it up against my garage, so it is sticking out where. Well, I think we have to take into consideration where we live and. Some of these, you know, on the street, I, I realize you, that's illegal and on and on and on, but. You know, this one on the street, he's got a Jeep, which is also a high desert thing. Everybody has a four wheel driver motorcycle and he's got a trailer, so where's he gonna park everything? He's gonna have to sell something. My only comment.
Um. I would like to see RVs eliminated. In planned unit development. If it's a, if it's a PUD track, I don't think they should, I, they just don't build them. To accommodate that. I don't care what anybody does. If it's a planned unit development, the driveways are short, the side yards aren't wide. And if even if they put it in their backyard, they're, they're not doing it properly, so I, I, I just think. You know, like Larry said, when, when you have the property to do it, then sure. But I, I just can't think of any planned unit development that is able to accommodate an RV. And then secondly. How are we defining an RV? Because a boat is an RV. Uh, the camper trailer that's uh right here in the one picture. Doesn't even go over the fence line, but, but it's an RV. So, so we're go- we're gonna have to figure out some kind of a, a. Definition of RV and I, like I said, I, I, I would eliminate the um, the parking of an RV period. Unless it's below the fence line in a planned unit development. Those are just my. My thoughts. And it is blight. I would agree with you. I, I consider that blight. Uh, a lot of them plug it in and they're actually using them there.
Right.
They can get a permit to park in front of the house for how long is it?
I believe it's fourteen days.
Fourteen days, okay, so there's no reason to have something plugged in out on the street continuously, so I, I just think. You know, if you're gonna come after camping and unload and, you know, do all the stuff and wash it and all that, then that's fine, but. I just don't think the planned unit development can accommodate big RVs. Just weren't designed for it.
Can I have a comment? Are there sufficient amount of businesses that store? The RVs and the boats and things like that? Is it possible that the city could, I mean, we have enough land here to, to build something like that to accommodate? People who can't afford these. These uh vehicles and uh maybe that would eliminate it. If they're a homeowner, they get a reduced cost. If they're. A renter, well, not as much or I don't know what it would be, but I'm just saying. And we can, you know, maybe the city can look into that if there's not already a sufficient amount or suggest that to the business owner. That may already have that establishment.
We do, I think Scott can probably uh comment on some of the uses that we have to storage uh businesses.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly common for a self-service storage facility uh to accommodate uh area for RV parking. Um, there's a couple in the pipeline right now, one that's, that's finishing up construction that, that adds a little bit more RV parking. Um, if we could, if we bring this back, we could look into it further to check kind of what their occupancy rates are to kind of see what the demand is. If that kind of helps the commission and their determination.
Um. One other thing I've seen before and that is, and it, it would definitely be for the future, but um I, I have seen housing tracks where the builder. Has an area. Accommodate RVs specifically. And that's actually a good selling point since so many people do have RVs. Um, but I don't want the taxpayers paying for somewhere for somebody to park their RV. There are so many storage places going on around here, it's unbelievable. I, I, I can't even begin to tell you how many there are. There are sufficient space, people just don't want to spend the money. We, we make the developers put a little park sometimes and when they design, why not a, why not an RV? I, I've said it a million times, if I had the money and was a developer, I'd build a track called RV World. And every house would have room for an RV without a setback or a problem and then, or uh an area to accommodate, you know, parking your RV.
I've got, uh, thank you for the handout as well. Um, this does kind of help because it shows some different scenarios. And one, one thing that I kind of noticed looking at these photos. Um, when the trailer. Um, or the utility, you know. Utility truck, um, when they seem to be a little bit smaller and they can tuck back up in between the houses or closer to the fence. And they're not sticking out as far or close to the sidewalk. It, it doesn't have that feeling when you're coming down the street that, whoa, there's this big finger sticking out and this big thing glaring at me and blocking views. Um, you know, we, we put all these design standards on the front of these houses nowadays. And then you plop these big things and block it all, you know, so it kind of defeats the purpose, but if they are set back in, it doesn't feel as bad. The second picture down on page one, that to me is unacceptable, that's just way too much. If every house was like that on the street, I. God bless them. The second page where the RV is set back quite a ways back there, it's off the street, it's not pushed right up on the sidewalk. That doesn't feel as bad to me on that, on that photo. Second page, second one down, you know, there it is pushed right out, that back bumper and that, that ladder right on the public right of way of, of the sidewalk. And it's, it's distracting and, and I don't, I don't like that as much, so maybe there's a way that. When we have something that comes back to us, maybe number one, we could look at some of the uh other cities. Maybe down the hill that have dealt with this and they found some kind of flexibility to where it's not so tight right up on the sidewalk. But they are still kind of allowed, maybe it's a footage thing from the sidewalk. You know, to the front face of the house. Or alongside the house if there is enough room and it's not affecting the neighbor and being like a big. Giant tall fiberglass wall right there. Maybe we could look at some of that if you guys are okay with directing the staff that way as well.
Can I just say, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the, the new, the state of California now requires us. To require an ADA bypass on the driveway. Some of these driveways. Look like they're twenty-five feet, but the actual bottom four feet is a handicap bypass ADA. So some of these driveways really aren't as long as they even appear nowadays. You can't block the uh, the handicap bypass. So uh, uh, yeah, uh, uh. Pretty much it. I, I think I've covered everything.
Um. There's no other comments on it, did staff, do you feel like um? Got a little bit of wild direction there, but.
Yeah, I thi- I think though the general uh consensus, uh, Lisa, that I gathered that it may be. For it to bring forward something that's a little bit more restrictive than what we have, um, looking at other cities down the hill. Um, also, um, maybe like a buffer setback to push it further if there is RV parking allowed in the front. Um, to give more of a, a buffer from that ADA access, um, so it's not so close to the uh street. And we can draft something like that and maybe even uh include an alternative that would just. Hard area we could um. Put some options together for the commission to review.
And um, this is a agendaized item, so I'm gonna open up the public hearing for these. We actually have. This one, we are dealing with the um, the RV parking and we have a few more topics to deal with. I do have a um. A card from uh Mr. Gross, I'm assuming that's the next one on the landscaping, okay? Is there anyone else that, that need, would like to um talk to us about the um RVs? Hang on, then um, we can uh move on to the next item of interest.
Thank you Chairman Kurt. Uh, item number two is a discussion on a landscape weed barrier. Um, it's another issue we wanted to bring to the commission's light about how this is being implemented and um the rigidness of our current standard. Um, and get the planning commission's feedback on how we, how and if you would want to uh consider a modification to the standards. Currently within uh residential, commercial and industrial. Uh, there's a requirement for a weed barrier lining that a landscaper would install uh between the dirt and the landscape rock. Um, what we found though is that it's not a end all be all that eliminates the requirement to maintain landscaping. Over time with the wind, um, and the deterioration possibly of the product, we, you do get weeds that grow up. So it still requires maintenance and so what we've heard from contractors is requests to allow for an alternative. Um, there's um pre-emergent that could be poured on it, uh, there's other options that, that the contractors have suggested. Um, so, but currently staff is held to what the code says, which requires that lining to go down. Uh, so with that, we wanted to get the planning commission's feedback if, if staff could move forward with providing some alternatives. Um, that maybe have um. That are checked on over ti- time to ensure that the property is properly maintained.
Thank you. I think at this time it would uh, it would be helpful to um. Uh, we have someone here to speak to us who I know is an expert in this, so I'd like to hear some of the real world first.
Thank you. Um, well first. He just installed the median down Seventh Street. These pictures are taken within the first forty feet of one of the corners. I only took so many pictures because it was just so many weeds that are growing in this landscaping already. And it does have the weed barrier. I've been a landscaper for thirty-two years, um, most of them here in the high desert. The weed barrier doesn't always work. It's, it's one of those things where landscapers actually can make more money off a job. I'm in the process of landscaping High Desert Church. There is so much area at High Desert Church to put a weed barrier down. It was gonna raise their cost almost fifteen thousand dollars in order to put the weed barrier down. The problem is when you put the weed barrier down, the product that comes in from the quarries, whether it's crushed rock. Three ace rock or decomposed granite DG, it sits on top of the fabric. The crushed rock and the three ace rock, the pea gravel has DG in it, which is basically dirt. It's just the fines from the crushed rock. So where's the weed gonna grow? On top of the fabric. We have wind up here like you, you all know. What blows through the air? Dirt, silt, dust. Where does it land? On top of the fabric. So what's the next thing that's gonna happen? The weed's gonna grow on the fabric. The fabric keeps the ground, it keeps everything underneath the, uh, underneath the material, the rock or whatever, soft, so it can't really compact. So you've always got this fine powder underneath that fabric that the weed is gonna grow. Lowe's in Victorville, I used to take care of that years ago and I'm taking care of it again. We pulled all the weed barrier out of there because they were getting more weeds than any other place here in the high desert. I still maintain Costco and Winco, they have weed barrier in those. They put the shopping carts up in there, when they pull the shopping cart out, if the weed barrier's been. Um, what's the word I'm looking for? Torn a little bit, the wheels grab the weed barrier and pull it up. That's when you see all that little black stuff coming up out of the uh planters, you're never gonna get away from that. Um, those pictures right there are proof that it, it doesn't work. It's only been a few months since that landscape's been completed. Pre-emergent like uh Scott said, that's the way to go. When I do a landscape, I use what's called dimension. I sprinkle it throughout the landscape, six months later. If I'm getting weeds, I'll put down another application. I very rarely have to spray any kind of herbicide to kill off the weeds because I'm using the pre-emergent. But on the ones that have fabric, I can't hula home. All I can do is spray them, so I'm putting chemicals into the ground. Yes, I mean, it's, it's just roundup, but. It's not a homeowners, yeah, it could work at houses. You don't have the foot traffic driving or walking over it. People walk across the planters, they poke holes in that fabric, especially with the requirement of three quarter inch rock. I know the city requires three quarter inch rock. I've got several locations that do not want to use three quarter inch because it gets kicked out of the planters. Somebody's walking through the parking lot, trips on that rock, twists their ankle, falls down and sues the client or sues the customer. Walmart on Amargosa Road is one of those places. They wanted to. Um, encase all their rock in decomposed granite like I did to the Walmart in Hesperia. If you've ever been to the Walmart in Hesperia. You could drive a car across those planters, it's gonna leave a dent. When we rub it out, it's gonna go. But in Victorville, we're constantly picking rocks up out of the parking lot. But we can't do the whole parking lot, so they have parking lot sweepers. Unfortunately, parking lot sweeper, the trucks cannot pick up those three quarter inch rock. You could see a sweeper go through a parking lot. It's not gonna get the three quarter inch rock. They just don't have the power to pick that up. Pea gravel, decomposed granite, that'll all go up into the sweeper. I've done this for a long time. I've come to the planning department, I don't know how many times, and talked with Scott and the other folks there. I have been pushing for some changes to the codes with the, the three quarter inch rock. I, I think there was a thing a while ago where you couldn't use anything but, uh, you could not use gray rock, but that was a. Somebody must have misinformed me on that one. Um, but a lot of my clients, we're getting ready to do speed, two speed washes here in Victorville. They don't want rock. They want DG, they want the decomposed granite. Kids run around the parking lot. I've watched the one in Victorville in uh industrial, the kid sits there with a vacuum sucking up the rocks and you hear the rocks running through the uh pipes. They don't want that. I can understand using some, the larger rocks like they did down Seventh Street as an accent, so it's not just completely one hundred percent DG. But honestly, that's what people want these days. They do not want the rock. They don't want that. Liability issue of tripping and people are suing left and right because they're tripping on rock. And the fabric, another thing with the fabric, if you, like uh the speed wash, they have a hump designed into this landscape. I can't get rock to stick to the ground, to adhere to the ground, to build up enough where the rock is gonna stay on the hump. Um, it slides down behind Lowe's. Behind Lowe's, um, where Michael Staples Dollar Tree is, that's one of my locations, the rock is sliding down the fabric all the time, and we're trying to rake it back up. It's worthless. It's, it's not going to happen. Uh, the next thing I'm going to do is I'm going to have to remove the fabric there. I had a lot of pictures of fabric sticking up all over the high desert, or all over Victorville, uh, with weeds growing out of it, but I think those pictures, just with the city's landscape, show just what, what's happening.
Any questions?
Yeah, Rob. So,
No, I'm Dave. That's Rob.
Dave, I'm sorry. Uh, Dave, uh, so, uh, do you think, in your opinion, do you think it would be better that if, uh, while bidding the work, if the cloth, uh, requirement is removed, that say, uh, we adopt, uh, something that says it has to have an initial spraying of a pre-emergent? And then after that, i- you can give, uh, when you're done with the landscaping job, you give them their notice? If you want to keep it looking like this, you got to do this every six months, or whatever it is. I know in, uh, my other house in Lake Havasu, nobody has grass. It's all rock. I have a guy comes twice a year. I, I haven't had a weed in my yard for ten years. So, when I'm doing foundations, uh, and concrete, uh, if you have to have the ground treated for termites prior to laying down the concrete, that was part of the inspection process, so why not eliminate the cloth, uh, for commercial? And then just require, uh, that, uh, the landscape contractor supply a proof of spraying the pre, the pre-emergent?
That would work. I mean, is, whether it's a house, a commercial, industrial, um, they could provide with, uh, they could take pictures of the application on the ground because the dimension leaves a, uh, assault-looking, um, residue, not residue, but you know, particles on the ground. Um, if it's commercial property and the place is getting out of hand and it's getting weeded, I mean, it's, if it's looking bad, well, I'm sure code enforcement's going to go by and they're going to cite them for, you know, unsightly landscaping. There is way better ways to take care of the landscaping than the fabric, um, and maintenance. I mean, if, if everybody has a maintenance, and I know not everybody does, if everybody has a maintenance program, you won't have a weed program, or weed problem. And on new installations, it just doesn't work.
Uh, I, I think a lot of people don't understand also that, uh, spraying a peer, that, I mean, when you say you're going to spray something, most people think it's going to kill everything, but a pre-emergent doesn't, you can have a, uh, existing landscape and the pre-emergent does nothing to it, correct?
Correct. It, you can actually put pre-emergent and then plant a garden and it keeps weed seeds from germinating. And if you hula-ho in that area, you should put some more pre-emergent in that area because you've just broken that barrier.
Thanks Dave, good information.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, any other, uh, questions or thoughts?
Uh, just a thought, um, because, like, for, from a private standpoint, because I used that barrier and I thought, you know, I mean, for the, forever I was so proud of the front yard because there weren't any weeds, and then it rained. I didn't anticipate all this rain. And now the weeds have popped up all in between the, you know, from the, from where like the border of the sidewalk and the barrier, it's just lined with weeds. And, you know, I, I had noticed too, um, and I agree, you know, with, uh, with the median, uh, because I was just going down Seventh Street today and I was looking, I said, wow, these weeds are popping up fast. You know, and so I think that, you know, something that's, um, uh, pre-condi- uh, pre-whet-not, um, urgent, I think if that works better, it'll be more cost-effective also too, um, in the long run.
There's actually, I've, I've seen a new contractor in the valley now for a couple of years. He parks his truck sometimes around. It's called Got Weeds. And I believe that contractor is specifically, his business is spraying pre-emergent?
Post-emergent.
Okay. So there's, there's, it's not like it's not, I know it's not read, it's not readily available to a homeowner, correct? You have to have a license to buy a pre-emergent? No?
Anybody can go to Lowe's, Home Depot sells pre-emergents, uh, the irrigation shop sell pre-emergent. Everybody can put it down. It's...
Okay, so, um, if everyone's okay, it sounds like, um, we have a bit of a consensus that, um, we're okay with looking at these different flexible, um, options. So if staff wants to, uh, move forward and, you know, whether it be the... Whatever makes sense. I'm, I'm all for it. I, I don't, I don't think in this case we need to stick to one certain, we've heard from an expert, and I think staff already is willing to, you know?
Yes, yeah, and we, we may pick Dave's brain a little bit as we draft the code.
Perfect. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So, um, item number three, uh, we're, uh, we've had some requests, uh, due to the strict nature of our massage ordinance, uh, for, um, massage day spas to allow massage as accessory to their established business. And based on our current code, um, due to the strict separation standards, they wouldn't be able to move forward and add that service for their clients. So, um, that's just at face value. Um, we could put additional restrictions to make sure that, uh, this type of, uh, day spa doesn't convert into a standard massage parlor, that it's accessory, that it's limited to certain square footage of the, uh, suite. Um, and then they would still have to comply with all other, um, technician certification requirements of the state. Um, but we wanted to bring this forward because it, the way our, our code is structured now, if you're, uh, all you do is massage, yes, there's very strict standards as far as separation. You have to be three thousand feet away from another massage parlor, um, I believe six hundred feet away from a s- school district, uh, or a school, and two hundred feet from a residential, uh, district. So, if we were to modify the code, we could, we could place, um, standards that would prevent, uh, a salon from converting into a massage parlor, but still allow it accessory, uh, and make it a conditional permit, um, where they would be held to those standards. Again, just wanted to get your feedback. I don't know if this is a issue of concern, um, but we wanted to bring it forward since this massage ordinance is, has only been in, in, uh, existence for about five years.
Yeah, I'm for it, uh, for what you stated. I work with a lot of salons in my business, commercial real estate, and, and almost all of them do s- light secondary uses of nails, maybe some tanning. And, uh, most often they want to have a massage therapist there for their customers, so it's pretty typical and it's pretty normal. I'm for that. And you mentioned, um, maybe constraining it to a percentage or amount of floor space so it doesn't actually morph into a full massage business. I think that would be a good policy for that.
I think that's, that's a consensus, so, so we can, we can move forward with that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I agree.
With that, I can move on to the, the final item.
I'm going to stop you for one second. I noticed there was a couple of people here. Um, just in case, are, are you folks wanting to, to talk or chime in on any of the items we're talking about on this one? No? Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
So, um, moving on with, uh, the last, uh, item, we wanted to get your, uh, feedback on. Uh, currently, uh, mainly along Seventh Street Old Town area, we have, um, issues with, um, vacant buildings and, uh, our code currently, uh, cites all of those businesses that are in a boarded-up state as a nuisance, uh, but doesn't provide a lot of guidance as far as how to secure an abandoned building, um, still make it attractive, um, but secure it in a manner that won't be va- further vandalized. So, uh, the code enforcement official is here as well to provide, um, some background on some of the new products. Uh, but what we're looking for is guidance that would allow us to draft an ordinance that would require property owners to not just board up their facility, um, but bring it to a state that looks more of like an attractive, unoccupied suite. Where, whereby you could still have a storefront, maybe it is this, uh, polycarbonate, like, plastic storefrontage, but it still looks like a window, and it's looking into a suite that's in a, um, state that's maintained. Or if it's not maintained, maybe has a drop cloth, uh, still allows some type of visibility for the, for the police department to look in. Kind of needed your, your feedback on how you thought, um, about this, uh, if you thought that the property owners are having a hard enough time and just, maybe we should just allow them to stay it i- in a boarded-up state. Um, but I would say that our current code does call that out as a nuisance. And the only way they're allowed to stay in it, uh, stay in a boarded-up state is if they have an active building permit to, uh, fix the issue. So they're, they've had a window that's broken, or, um, they're fixing it within, eh, what it was, uh, up until the beginning of this year, it would give them a six-month timeframe to do that with a building permit. Uh, but the state's changed that, and now building permits can be active for over a year. So, business owners could prolong that and still leave it in a boarded-up state. So we just mainly wanted to get your feedback if, uh, if we're on the right track as far as devising more standards to force them to bring it to a, a more presentable state. Uh, the examples that we've passed out, um, show, eh, I would say a poor application of a, a product called ClearView. Um, it is a good durable product. It's the, it's a plastic material that looks like a window. Um, but if it's not applied correctly, um, in this case, the examples show, uh, an exposed two-by-four holding it in place, it still gives it that unfinished look. So what we're hoping is to devise standards that, uh, would make it more presentable, um, but yet secure the property. With that, I welcome any feedback you have.
Since I do a lot of board up, um, polycarbonate is not old any better than plywood would. And you'd have to use Lexan if you wanted, or, which is very, very expensive, so is polycarbonate. What would be wrong with an idea of using good paint on plywood? And if the plywood is missing or falls down, make them put it back up, or, or replace it and charge them, or whatever. But, you know, Old Town is going to be a problem forever, until something's done down there. And these homeless just tear everything up and try to find a place to sleep and, uh, you know, they're breaking the glass to get into the wa- the building to sleep. Um, so, uh, you know, I see something broke every, every day. I drive Seventh Street every day. And, uh, so, that's kind of what I would recommend. Uh, you know, if, if, like this picture here, what good is it to put something nice on and then have such a ugly top? You going to make them paint the whole building? I don't think so. So, I would try painting the plywood and make them, and make them, uh, you know, if it is tore up, cite the owner or something. Carpet is really expensive. Plastic is expensive. Scratches, once it, the homeless scratches, you can take a, uh, pencil and scratch fluxed glass. I don't recommend that. And screen, I don't really know what you mean by screening. Talking about a picture like this type of thing, or?
It would be a, through a, a metal product, uh, kind of like a screen door, a security door.
That would get awfully expensive also. And, you know, you might be a, a short time period of something or a long time period. You know, Old Town is going to be a long time period of something. That's going to open up real fast down there. Thinking about doing something like that. determine what is it going to be? Like I boarded up a window for a week because I have to order. So I use retro plywood. You know, you could make me paint the plywood for the week or two. I'm with that. What, uh, might be just a little off, but what, what are we doing to, for the owner, the owners of this? I mean, are we, are we getting a hold of them and saying, hey, you're boarded up, but you still need to maintain it? Um, I do agree with Larry, but I also think that the, um, rather than just using the particle board, this one here with the, uh, I don't know if it's decorative, but it's not, it's not particle board. But, um, uh, I, I think if, maybe if there's something like that on there, and instead of the particle board, and of course keeping it painted like Larry said, but are, are we going after these owners? I mean, do they really just board these things up and say, sayonara?
Commissioner Herrmann, can we, um, once again invite the code enforcement official? He would be the most knowledgeable to answer that, and I'd also like him, um, to help shed some light on, um, the SecureView product and program that the city is working on, uh, to address some of Commissioner Huber's concerns with the cost of polycarbonate? If that's okay?
Thank you. So, we're, we're looking with, uh, I'll start with SecureView. Uh, the product is, uh, has been tested. We, we tested it several years ago in a residential zone, uh, residential property, I should say, I'm sorry. Um, against, uh, intrusion primarily. It's virtually unbreakable. Um, it's intended to provide a benefit to give the impression of glass, uh, along with the ability for law enforcement to see inside that particular unit. Um, there's other options of other jurisdictions that have used this where they use, um, backdrops inside of it to give the impression perhaps of a storefront, of what it, what one would look like. Um, uh, perhaps maybe a curtain, um, just to give that, uh, in, in the case that the, the property inside actually is perhaps a bit beat up. Um, one of the, one of the prime examples of kind of side to side is, I don't know if you have this picture with you, but there's a picture that looks just like this. And there's a, the, the, the right side is the, is a property secured with SecureView. You'll see the picture that has a restaurant to the, to the right. In that picture, you're seeing, um, again, the property to the right is a property that has burned. As you can tell inside, actually, it's, there's, the, the ceiling is, is a bit damaged. But the property itself is secured through SecureView. Uh, our, our installer, um, used two-by-fours, as you can tell inside, because the, the entire wall actually was missing, reconstructed it and also used some, uh, some metal strips to give the, the impression of storefront, to give that appeal. Um, it's still up. It's, it works. Um, we've, again, we've, we've, we've tested it with a, a, a fireman's axe. Um, it does not break. Uh, it has a high, um, a, a, a high, uh, temperature rating as well. Uh, we, we've actually had a SecureView product, what we're using on the opposite side of that street, where apparently somebody was trying to burn it and looks like they ran out of gas and it just left a little bit of hole on there. Um, and, eh, you know, our, our, our troubles with, with, um, with, with plywood is that often what we're finding is that there are, are vagrants or homeless people are just defeating that. Uh, they're walking in with, with, uh, hammers or, or an axe or something, as you can see in some of the pictures, you can see it's been defeated and broken into. And so our objective here is, in using SecureView, is, uh, a twofold as well. Not only is it almost, it's unbreakable, but it also gives us impression of, of, that the place is not, uh, depressed, right? That the place is as a, a bit of an appeal.
George, can you also speak to the program wherein the city is actually intending to purchase the SecureView and loan it to the, um, primarily the Old Town owners for boardups in an effort to, um, remove some blight from the area, but, um, also make it affordable? And then we take the panels back and reuse them?
Correct. Um, the city has acquired, uh, some SecureView product already, uh, with the intention to try to help the, the, uh, property owner in loaning them the SecureView product, uh, through an optional installation, either through their, uh, installation through their, to the owners, workers or the city would perform that, uh, installation, um, and, uh, eventually securing a reimbursement for that, for that installation. Uh, the objective there again is to, um, help these owners who are being subjected to constant break-ins, um, in, in using a product that should work a lot better than, than plywood. Uh, to, uh, the commissioner's question as to whether or not we're requiring owners to do that, we are. Uh, but often what we're finding is that the, the intrusion is, you know, we're having to vacate, remove a, an occupant that's in there illegally. And we're faced with, with a situation where we have to resecure this, uh, and we do often resecure it. Uh, but what we're finding that, uh, some of the units that have been used with SecureView, um, they're just not being defeated. And so we're, we're, our thoughts is that, uh, the use, through the use of this program, as the deputy city manager indicated, um, is, should be beneficial for, for these owners and provide a la- uh, lasting measure for security and overall an improved look for, an appeal for, for Old Town.
With as much stuff that's boarded up down there, I would say the city's gonna have to have quite an inventory of that stuff. I don't know. Um, can't be free. So if you're not gonna do it to your building and the city has to come do it, it's gonna cost you money. I think too many people think the city should just do everything for them down there. I want it to look nice just as much as everyone else, but we're gonna lend something. It, it's, they're, they're gonna have to pay for it, in my opinion.
Agree, and the objective as well there is, is to resecure that product once the, uh, the property is occupied and developed, uh, and reuse that. That, that product, you're right, is, is pricey, uh, but, uh, it, it also can be reused. Uh, wood can too, but of course wood eventually decays and, and if you're gonna paint it to match to structure, obviously, it just, it's not as usable as a SecureView product.
So you've looked at this pretty thoroughly then?
We have. We've tested, like I said, we tested it.
So let's say, let's say the city, they, we do it that way. Uh, with that, does the maintenance of it c- come from the city? Uh, in other words, here, cover your storefront? But we'll come by and make sure it stays, you know, acceptable? Or is that gonna be the responsibility of the, of the, of the owner? I just, I don't know. I think that, um, maybe it's a better sell that way? If you, but they're gonna have to pay for it, but we'll maintain it, kinda thing?
Correct. The owner in, in, as we're creating this, this particular agreement, will have the responsibility not only to maintain it, but to make sure it remains on there. Um, we're, obviously if, if it goes, if it's goes missing or the property transfers, there's a responsibility for the owner to re, to, uh, give us back our product.
And that's secured by a lien on the property, a lien instrument on the property, the installation costs as well as if we don't get the product back.
I can imagine how many liens we have down there. It's just, I knew.
I think, I think it's the right direction as far as, because the ultimate goal is occupancy. So if you have a boarded up building or you have a whole street that, you know, seventy-five percent of all the buildings are boarded, you know, anybody that's looking at potentially maybe starting a business or they're gonna avoid that area. It looks like it's, you know, the, it looks like there's nothing happening in that area because of the boarded, you know, and, and yeah, you can paint it and everything else, but it's still boarded. You know, so I think that, uh, with the ClearView, I think that does, that, you know, that's heading in the right direction because then it also gives the potential that yes, there is, you know, it, it's a facelift, but it's also, it looks like it's still open. You know, I mean, it looks like there's still some, you know, some livelihood down there in that area. So I think it's the, I think that's a good direction.
And to the additional comment, we've had actually a business acquire some SecureView, a larger, they come in different sections. Uh, he, uh, the business kept getting the, a, a large window broken out, uh, facing a busy street, Seventh, I believe Seventh and Victor. He used SecureView, um, he hasn't needed to replace, it's just, it's completely secured now. It's a vacant structure and he understood that upon occupancy, he'll have to remove that and replace it with a window, but.
I'd like some, just a little clarity. Okay, this photo where it says restaurant in it, that's the ClearView, uh, that you're referring to?
Correct.
As to what's used? So you can, so a person can look, can see inside, like in this example, they can see it's gutted and burnt out. That is actually a good view for somebody to be able to see in there and see that it's destroyed?
I agree, and that's one of the options, uh, of some other jurisdictions have used as a backdrop, uh, perhaps on, uh, not o- not only on to perhaps hide away the damage of that structure, but just to give the impression perhaps, um, for the public, for investors to see what it would look like, the area would look like should there, should there be shops in this area. And the backdrops could be again, um, uh, uh, window, you know, false, false walls basically with showing perhaps merchandise. Uh, some jurisdictions have also just used curtains just to provide, you know, they're providing this, this, this look of a window while equally hiding the contents or the, um, or showing that the place is vacant as well. There's some benefits to, to allowing, um, as, as far as for law enforcement to be able to see inside, um, of a, of, of a boarded up, um, location. You understand that some of these here, we're only looking at it from the, from the front side. Often we're seeing that the entries may be made from the ins- from the back, from the rear. And so a boarded up, uh, structure often could be occupied, we just don't know because they've made entry from the backside, so.
What would your, what would your guess be, say from Forest all on down to D Street, just Seventh Street facing frontages? How many of those buildings would you imagine are, are abandon, abandoned, probably not gonna be occupied anytime soon? Probably a lot of them will continue to burn down. That's just the lifespan of how, you know, the functionally obsolescent buildings go. What percentage would you say is, just a guess, is, is vacant, abandoned, boarded up and could possibly benefit from this program?
Of the units that are abandoned right now, I would say they could benefit a hundred percent. I mean, it's, it's, the alternative is to keep boarding up a, a structure that keeps being, being defeated. Um, and as you could tell, some of these, some of these, um, uh, properties are boarded up with paint and some of them haven't been painted because there's just a, a fresh, um, plywood, piece of plywood has been put on there. Um, I would, as far as the occupancy, I could tell you that there's a, a high percentage of, uh, vacancy in that area.
Maybe half of the buildings might have problems like this?
Correct. I, I would say yes.
Okay, and but is that, is that feasible to, with the costs of this product, to be able to get enough material to then try to really get these building owners to take advantage, pay their costs? Cause I think, I think on the surface, that's a really creative and good idea that the city's been working on. The alternative is let them burn and then scrape them and then you've got slabs. Just doesn't look so good. You're driving through there, at least if they are some facade type of look, at least it's not so obvious. And people might say, oh yeah, this, this obviously was a, was an Old Town of some sort.
Our initial acquisition with that, of the product is, uh, intended to secure about eighty percent of the units that are vacant.
How much?
About eighty percent of the units that are currently secured through, uh, through plywood.
That's pretty aggressive.
So.
If I'm, may I add one more comment? Um, what you mentioned about the fires, that was kind of one of the reasons that we explored the SecureView product because what was happening with code enforcement is the plywood is very easy to break into. So they could put it in one day and it's down the next by the people getting in. And there was another product that we tried out at the airport, um, that was offered by a company, uh, named VPS and it was also very secure. You could not get in it, but it was like metal grates, so it wasn't aesthetically pleasing. So the SecureView, one of the purposes of SecureView is also just that, so that code enforcement isn't constantly replacing the board ups because they can only wait so long for the owner to respond and people aren't, can't, the goal is so that people don't get in there, mainly the homeless to keep warm, and then we end up with more fires down there.
Right.
How about, um, if it's, uh, spray painted with graffiti, does it just pressure wash off or does, is it then ruined?
I'm, I'm not entirely sure how easy it is to maintain with graffiti. I know as Commissioner Huber indicated, um, the, there, it could be etched. Um, and so there's, there's some possibility of some vandalism that occurs on, uh, with that. That's a good question. I, we'd have to look at the product specs and see how easy that is to maintain.
You know this product, right, Larry? Can you answer that for me, Larry?
I think.
I'm in the business, so.
I, I think, I think, um, to answer staff's question on this one, if everyone's in concurrence, once again, to move forward and take a look at some of these creative, some of these creative ideas and to, um, may, maybe even change, uh, policies and ordinance, um, of how things are handled on, you know, not even, not just Old Town, but, you know, citywide, there's problems.
I'd like to see this stuff.
So I, I would, I would, I would say let's, let's take a look at that, if you guys are okay.
Yeah, the property that's pictured on there with the restaurant logo is, has currently on there, you're welcome to take a bat to it and see if you can break it.
Let the, let the sheriffs know you're doing that first.
Of course.
Thank you very much. That was informative. Okay, in compliance with the Brown Act, it's necessary for the planning commission to make available time for the members of the public to address the planning commission on items, items of interest that fall within the planning commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Is there anyone here to speak to us tonight? And, uh, with that, um, any, uh, reports from commissioners? I'll start to the right, Commissioner Marsh.
Uh, not a really a rep- uh, report, but I would just like to just, uh, congratulate the city of Victorville and staff for a job well done, well job greatly done as far as the, uh, um, the commission of the, you know, and the, the introduction and the, the placement and the work of, you know, putting in the new city fire department. Uh, um, it was, uh, went to that, uh, went to the breakfast. Um, I, I got more than what I expected. You know, I, I thought there was just gonna be like a few firefighters that came on board, you know, but to see an entire class and just all the people, um, it gave me a sense, I mean, it gave me a sense of pride and, um, yeah, it just, I was in awe. So, you know, congratulations on a job very well done.
Commissioner Wilt?
Well, I too attended the, uh, presentation of, for the firemen this morning and it was awesome. See all those men being, uh, presented well, badged and recognized. So I appreciate the fact that I was invited to be there. And, uh, again, I think the things that we've covered today, uh, I don't have any additional comment. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Huber?
No comment.
I'll just reiterate what everyone just said. What a, what a morale builder. I'm pumped up about this fire department. Everything looked great, but I, I, I really find it as a real morale builder in our city. That, I really do. And, um, and I, uh, one other comment I wanted to make is, um, there's a business, uh, Dunkin' Donuts on Bear Valley Road. And since it's been built, I've seen a wooden fence separating it from another piece of property. That looks so cheesy. Uh, how, how did we let somebody build something like that there and let them get away with a track home wooden slap fence? I, I, I'm not, I'm not understanding that. So maybe, uh, n- next meeting or something, we can, i- i- if that was, and it must've been okay to do it, but there's gotta be, I would hope something better because that, that just doesn't look very good. That'll do it for me.
Any final comments, uh, from staff?
Uh, yes, I'd like to provide an update on the, our, um, meeting from last month, we, uh, the pla- planning commission recommended approval of some code amendments. Uh, happy to report back that the city council, uh, also approved those, their first reading of those amendments, so those went through. Uh, we do have some, uh, additional training, uh, available for you for the CalApa conference in September. So we'll be sending out, um, I, the itineraries as they come out, so reserve, uh, if you're interested, uh, reserve the, your calendar for September fifteenth through the eighteenth and the, this year's February. So we'll be sending more information out on that as it comes. Um, and then I, I can address the, uh, Dunkin' Donuts issue. Um, I could somewhat take, uh, responsibility for that. The, the condition of approval of that project required a, uh, a barrier uh, to prevent, uh, cars from driving onto the vacant lot. Um, but when it went through plan check, it wasn't specified exactly what it was. So what the contractor put in was a, was a full-on fence, um, but what we've seen in the past and, and it wasn't specified on the plans was just a low rail fence. Uh, but what I'll do is I'll reach out again to the, uh, developer to see if they can, uh, minimize it because it really isn't needed and I could see it becoming a, um, an attractive, uh, surface for graffiti or, uh.
Yes, yeah, gonna be that. It, it certainly doesn't need to be six feet high, maybe if it would have.
Correct, yeah, we've, we've seen just like a low rail fence installed, um, at the, uh, Walmart shopping center off of three ninety-five. So we could, uh, we'll reach out and try to get that resolved for you.
Okay, well, thank you all. Uh, meeting adjourned.